Good. Call to order, Planning Commission. Roll call. Steve Vitalek?
Present.
Genevieve Radzick?
Present.
Robert Canal?
Present.
Craig Sims? Say the last name again.
Sims.
Sims. Craig Sims?
Present.
Miriam Frasier Lyons? Present. Rachel Wintsett here. Chrissy Bankowski? Present. Okay, we'll start with our public hearing and we'll open our public hearing at 7:01. For a rezoning request from Lombardo, Cosmo Lombardo, rezone the northerly 180 feet of existing parcel 0634152030 from residential office to single-family two.
I'll go over here so I can address the, uh, you guys as well as... So I am proposing a rezoning to the northern 180 feet of an approximately two-acre parcel off of Clausen and Grashit Avenue. This here is a, it's just a blow up of your existing zoning map here. I'd like to rezone it from residential office to single-family two. You'll notice that on the other side of the street, the parcels are single-family two and everything in the area that fronts off any of these interior streets is single-family two. So I believe that my, my request, um, it makes sense with the, the current zoning that surrounds it. The reason for it is that I would like to get three splits off of Clausen Street where the residential office setbacks and lots sizes will not allow me to do that. And it'll provide a good transition here for, you know, if residential office would be a desk office or an entry or something like that, I believe that'll provide a good transition from a residential community to whatever would end up in the residential office zoning issue.
Anybody questions want to start around?
Although we just have to public hearing and then close it and then discuss it below. So you want to deal with all of this one's by getting on.
Either way. Did you, you have anything you'd like to say?
Um, I got several things. If you look at our zoning map, the only Grashit property that we have residential office is that piece of property. We don't have any other residential office left. So you're taking it and splitting it basically in half and it's creating this small parcel D, which, what residential office is going to fit there when you put the building, you put the parking, you, it makes it inadequate to actually, um, put the piece of property of residential office. The other thing is that, then you're sticking this house right on Grashit Avenue in the side yard where it's designed with the residential office to make this a buffer from Grashit to the residential neighborhood. So I don't see that it's a positive plan to change when it's going to make that parcel D, D much enough.
What's going to go between, um, at the end of Clausen Street, you have three houses, then in between the other three houses, the big, uh...
The big house.
Yeah.
We do not own that, that parcel, so...
Can you turn so we can see?
It's just going to be whatever it currently is.
Yeah, whatever it, it would be.
Is currently residential, this time there's a residential outside.
There, okay.
How about some of the land?
That property is owned by that first house there that currently exists?
This property, I, I, I don't know who owns that parcel.
And this one isn't actually built, correct? There's nothing here? Is that actually a lot?
Yes, there's a, I think there's a duplex right there.
No, it's a rock. There's nothing in that spot. There's not a house, I don't know if it's a building or not, obviously.
No, there's a house, there's a house.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a house across the street from my proposed lots.
There's three houses.
Robert, the first lot that is white there is primarily all drain, there's the drain runs through there.
Oh, so is that where the rock is?
The next property, the first one that's brown, is a residential lot, but it's most likely not buildable due to the drain running through the backyard.
So that's the third lot.
And then as you get to the next one, you have the first actual residential house. So the white one and the first brown one are, I know, built up.
That's what I thought. Because the second house is where, well, the middle lot is where the former trustee lived. And then the next house after that, um, is one of our DPW guys. Yeah, right on the map here, it's just, it's just a lot. I don't think it's buildable. There's a bunch of trees and I don't know what that is.
Yeah, the, the drain runs through there in the back of the yard.
So he's going to go... So that was another thing is that the residential property for that sub doesn't really start until, you know, a good 70, 80 feet from the road. And then what's proposed goes right up to the, the eaves of the road.
Okay, are you good, Rob?
Uh, yeah, filter my objections.
Rachel? Tracy?
Uh, is that it? For the new people, I have a copy of our zoning map.
Can you just tell me how far will the house itself be from Grashit? Do you have that, do you have your proposed plot plans yet?
No, because we wouldn't do a plot plan until we were proposing a home, but there is a, there's a 40-foot easement encumbering on parcel A of which, so at least 40 foot currently and then probably if you, you give the current, you know, if I had to guess, if I look at this line, this isn't the scale, but that's where Grashit currently is, that's probably 30 foot, that's another 40 foot, so 70 foot approximately would be where my building envelope would start. That doesn't necessarily mean that the house needs to be that close, that's just where my building envelope would start.
Because what size house, I mean, obviously you guys have done some planning ahead about how wide is the house going to be?
Parcel A has a 34-foot wide building envelope.
Okay.
What does it do to the, is there, there's power lines right here.
There are, there are power lines, they are, they are, utilities within the 40-foot easement that he's talking about on the front end of those properties that fronts Clausen. And they're not uncharacteristic of other places. I drove around looking at the community, there's other places where they had those in the front yard.
In terms of selling, is someone going to want to buy the whole power lines right away?
I assume not.
Near the roof, you know?
It's irrelevant, just...
Yeah, and, and... Yeah, and the power lines are up here and the houses would be, I'm having a hard time remembering what the asset due setbacks are, but you're 40 foot from there and then another 20 foot, I believe, from there, so you're, so you're 60 foot back a curb and those, uh, those power lines are, I don't know, 15, 20 foot back a curb. So, so you're clearing the curb by, by 40 foot before, so your house is nowhere near the, the actual lines themselves.
That was just paranoid curiosity, I don't really know what to do with that.
Yeah, I, I just saw it on the map and I was trying to picture, three homes are, you know, right there.
I don't have any other questions.
I don't.
Steve, Brian, Craig?
No.
Any comments, Jeff?
No, we offered no objections as far as, as far as the zoning, I think that the question, I just think it comes to you guys as the character of the area, you know? With the poles and the setbacks, I mean, you could, anyone who was looking to put corner commercial is going to get pushed back by those same, same offsets. So it's, it's really up to this community to decide. I will state that, um, with it, you know, once a site plan comes through, we will have you looking at that as well. And just looking at the site today, I mean, just thinking there may be some limitations on that first lot A. Looks like there's a drain that maybe runs across the front and I'm not sure of the elevation.
Yeah, and that, that drain's in that easement.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that's, belongs to, if that's part of the county drain or what that is there, so might be some limitations there, but it is an easement, like you said.
I guess I wanted to ask, we spoke about it before him, why did you, have you guys decided to, uh, discuss, like, converting the property from the business aspect to the residential?
Because, just because the residential office zoning will not allow for these sized lots with the setbacks, so allow me to build homes there.
Right, I understand that you guys don't, I assume you don't want to hold on to the, the residential office property or...
Yeah, that, that we probably, we'd probably put the, the remainder up for sale and then see if we could sell that.
Have you, have you tried selling it and has that been...
Yeah, we've tried selling this parcel and we've had it sign up there for, for a number of years, it just, it hasn't sold and we haven't had any interest in it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, motion to close the public hearing at 7:12.
Motion to close the public hearing?
I support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to approval of agenda, I just did want to add one item on the citizen planner under public comments, but under communication and correspondence.
Motion to approve the agenda with corrections.
Second?
Aye.
Any votes? Public comments on agenda items. Mr. Dilbert? Any comments on agenda items?
No.
Thank you. All right. Approval of the minute, January 7th, 2019. Did everybody get a chance to review them?
Motion to approve.
Motion and second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, communication and correspondence workshop, I'm not sure, did everybody get the citizen planner invitation from President Dilbert? Anybody not get it? Besides Miriam, who has it now?
I don't think I did.
Okay, I was with you as well. Did you get it reached from you? So for anybody who's interested, um, it starts on March 21st and goes till May 2nd, it's on Thursdays from 6 till 9. It's put on by the Michigan State Extension and McCollum County Plan, right? You guys?
It's primarily theirs, we just, we just partnered for the last, last portion of it.
So very good information. Rob and I took it last time while we're taking it, I believe Speaker Turner in the village will post if anybody's interested. Let Mr. Dilbert know and get you signed up.
We've offered also to the council.
Sorry? Oh.
The council had been offered the same request.
Okay, matters for consideration. Old, you know what? Anybody object to moving down to new business and can deal with the rezoning?
No.
Okay, we'll move down to new business rezoning requests, action for Lombardo rezone the northerly 180 feet of existing parcel 0634152030 from residential office to the single-family two. Anybody like to have...
I'd like to make a motion to deny the request to rezone as it's contrary to current zoning, contrary to the current master plan and is our only residential property on Grashit Avenue. And that the split makes the remaining residential office even less desirable, um, to build, if not partially impossible.
Is there a second for that?
And I wrote it down, so...
Has, has anyone, do you have had any bites on that land at all?
We have to, we have to get the motion on the table for what you're talking about.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Forgot.
Does anybody support that? I'll support it for the conversation. Okay, good.
Yeah, I was just curious, I mean, how long has that land been for sale?
So we combined it in 2009. So 10 years, we combined it in 2009 to attempt to be able to market it because originally it was a recorded plat in 1952, a part of the Chanel subdivision. I don't know how we, that was before my time, obviously, but we, I know we combined it in 2009 and we've been attempting to sell it to, to somewhere commercial ever since then.
Just as a point of information, originally it was nine 50-foot wide lots with a depth of 200, which is the, which is the depth, so that was originally planted with the subdivision most likely looking to be residential homes at that time.
Well, you could see probably where the streets would wrap around it and what have you. Don't think, Rob, you said there's no other residential property on Grashit, which there is.
No, I'm not saying that.
Residential office.
Residential office.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I heard, I just heard residential, okay.
No, if you look at the map.
Do we have a residential office in the...
On Main Street, but not on Grashit.
Oh, we can always rezone that, right?
Yeah, that's what we're doing here.
Right, but I mean for a residential office to create if we...
But that's the only really empty lot left on Grashit is that piece of, that residential office. The rest of the lots are filled.
Did you watch it up?
I think if that little piece parcel is left, if he's had an hour time marketing of our strip for residential office, what's it going to be like to, to do that little piece? I don't think our future holds putting more residential homes on Grashit. It's 220 feet by 220 feet.
Totally, you hear some of what's there. Chanel business here and here.
And you're putting the side lot of that house right on what would be a 50 mile an hour road. I mean, the piece of land is set, so 50 years.
Pardon?
So 50 years, basically, it hasn't been built up, right? Is that what you said in the 50s?
Yeah, yeah, it was part of the Chanel subdivision was planted in 1952 and that was, that was part of it.
It's been sitting there ever since.
Well, they didn't put residential lots on Grashit.
No, they didn't even, in 50 years though.
It's only been missed for the last 10 years.
What I'm saying is from the time it was deemed for residential in the 50s, I mean, it hasn't, it hasn't been touched until now, or about to be touched.
So the alternative would be to just continue letting it, since the way that it is, right?
Waiting to get it marketed to put something proper there that matches what...
But it might, you never know, it might, I mean, now, now it's a smaller hunk of land, 220 feet by 200 and, or 220 by 220, right? Or, sorry, 220 by 200, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, once you split that lot, I think that parcel is going to remain empty for another 50 years because it's going to be too small to put any residential office in that 220-foot wide piece of property. Because you've got that parking and setbacks.
Where in relation to the property that you guys are going to leave behind or that's going to remain residential office is the exit potentially to Pembroke?
Exit to Pembroke?
The Grashit exit.
Oh, the Grashit exit.
The library, where is the library supposed to be? Do you know that?
That, that would be south of the, I'm not sure what that building is, no, the old building, the old school building there. So you're talking another 100, 500 feet south of Grashit.
So this second, so if I'm looking at this correctly, the second parcel, if we would separate the two, the second residential office parcel actually butts up against Pembroke. And so that would be...
No, 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 that's the Chanel subdivision.
Yeah.
No. There's another one down here in this...
It's farther, but it's not up against. This is up against, I think there was that house fire back in there.
Right.
That's, that's where the house, it's directly behind that, not directly, but... That's all Chanel subdivision back behind that.
No, I'm talking right here, this property right here. But I, I don't, butts up to Pembroke and this is supposed to be the Pembroke-Grashit exit.
Yes, this is where the factory, that old school building is, that backs up to now. This piece is where it's going to be.
It's going to come down here. Oh, okay, so he doesn't own this piece?
No. And that's not residential office anymore, that got rezoned.
Okay, that's coming through, yeah, okay, here. This is going to come through here, gotcha.
So when you look at that map, that residential office sits on there, you're going to cut that in half and then cut it in half again, that's what would be left of the empty lot on Grashit for residential office. And hopefully, when all the things that we're working on get done, it'll be a marketable piece of land from the village standpoint.
Okay, anybody else? We just have so many empty spaces.
But we don't have empty spaces on Grashit. We've got plenty of places to build a house, I mean, you know. Village is littered with blocked empty lots. I don't think that it's, sticking home there on Grashit versus in our subdivision, because someone wants to live, we're building the subdivision, finish it.
I meant, not empty, open land, but we have buildings that are empty. Okay, so there's a motion on the table, are we good? Any more? Anyone?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Yeah, roll call, our roll call. Actually, did you repeat the motion? Yeah, so his motion is to deny the request of a rezon is, does that say contri?
Contrary.
To current zoning, contrary to master plan and, this one, and is our only residential office on Grashit Avenue and the split makes the remaining, we don't need all that.
Our old property.
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's just to deny the motion, you don't really need a reason.
You do need a reason to deny it?
It's good, we'll just walk it out there.
I mean, that, you have, that wasn't the reason.
Yeah, just... Best motion. We'll have, let's write this properly though. Motion to deny the request of a rezon is contrary to current zoning.
Nah.
Contrary to master plan and is our only residential office on Grashit Avenue.
And then I'm concerned that the smaller piece is going to remain empty for an even longer amount of time than, that's going to be, you know, less desirable.
And the split makes the remaining our old property less desirable, okay. Okay, so we're going to do a roll call. So, Rob Canal?
Uh, no.
So you don't want to...
I'm denying.
So you need, yes, you're...
Yes, for the motion.
Perfect, thank you. Genevieve Radzick?
No.
Steve Vitalek?
Uh, no.
Tracy Bankowski, no. Miriam Frasier Lyons?
No.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
And Rachel Wintsett?
No.
So, motion fails. Okay, anybody else like to put a motion on the table? I'll make a motion to agree with the petitioners' request. Okay, second that to rezon request Lombardo, Cosmo Lombardo, rezone the northerly 180 feet of existing parcel numbered from residential office to single-family two. I'll ask for roll call, no. Give me a second.
Sorry, I was reading the map, emotions.
To approve the request.
Okay, to rezon.
To rezon. Okay, okay, so Tracy Bankowski, yes. Genevieve Radzick?
Yes.
Miriam Frasier Lyons?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
No.
Rachel Wintsett?
Yes.
Rob Canal?
No.
And Steve Vitalek?
Yes.
Motion fails. Steve, you have a mic? Okay, we will go back to our old business, master plan discussion to discuss the process, purpose, public input, reasonability, focus area, engaging other entities. For those who have just joined us, that's our goal for this year, meet necessary because ours is about to expire and so that is our focus. So Jeff has some stuff to discuss.
Yeah, I'll start off with a couple of things. As we gave you guys a schedule last, last month in terms of what we figured we were starting in February, obviously, forward, what we really need this month, we need village council authorization received. With that, we would start the first process, which would be the formal notification of all our neighboring communities and utilities and that. I prepared to draft a letter for the clerk with a distribution list that would go out under Chris's signature, just basically telling everybody, all of our neighbors, that we will be engaging in this process and that throughout the process, they'll be getting draft or even the opportunity to comment on the plan that is proposed. I can tell you that staff is already looking this, this month or last month, they've already started looking at the demographic data, putting together a summary of what has changed since the last plan in terms of population, income, housing. I haven't seen the report yet, but I know there'll be a summary, just kind of giving us a direction of where we're going, where the community is right now and what also, based upon sometimes population trends and some other predictive data that we have, what direction the community is most likely going in terms of age, family forming, you know, family forming, age groups, host of other items. But with that said, if village council, which I'm assuming Chris was going to authorize this group to go forward for the master plan update, what I wanted to do this month was just to talk to you guys a little bit about the process. Some people have been through the process before, others haven't, some people went through citizen planner, probably had a decent outline of it. But the master plan document is supposed to be a guiding document that the community, this body, village council can look towards to say, this is the direction we want the community to go into. And way that it's shaped then is ultimately through the tools that you have, the site plan review process and the zone ordinance. So with that, as you're looking at master plan updates, what we normally do to engage the community is we take a look at the community, we try to break the community up in different character areas. When we did this exercise last time, we looked at the Grashit corridors, character area, we looked at the downtown, the central business district downtown area as a character area, 26 mile road and the industrial area as a character area. And with looking at the community in those, in those categories... And with looking at the community in those, in those categories, take a look at, is this what we want Grashit to look? What, do we want that vision to be? How can we, what changes could we make to the zoning ordinance? What changes could we potentially make to our procedures, if there are any that are needed, to make that vision become a reality? So I guess with that, what I wanted to do is just kind of open it up to you guys, if you have questions or what you guys would like to see. Because we, there are some things by ordinance that we, that by stat sheet that we want to do, and that is to engage the public throughout the process. We should, we should have at least two elements of public engagement. Most communities will midway through the process, once some goals and objectives have been formulated, will hold a public workshop and invite the community in. Obviously, the community is always invited to planning commission meetings, this is only a public meeting. But then they also look at other ways of, they'd like to see another way of engaging the community, either by survey or by, um... There's many different ways of doing it. Survey tends to be a more popular way, not necessarily getting always getting statistically significant results, but you tend to get, you tend to get concerned citizens who will voice long, longer types of concerns. But with that said, I think what Genevieve has here in the, in the agenda, in terms of, you know, the process, we go through some of these things, with the process, we have to engage the public. We will be looking at a document that is going to have a demographic component, it's basically the state of, this is what we think the community looks like today, so the trends of which where the community's heading in terms of population growth. Also, excuse me. We need to engage the community, we will be looking at generating a set of goals and objectives that become a guidepost for basically moving forward with the master plan. And those goals and objectives can then have an action plan, which be actionable items. So I'll give you a theoretical, we have all tied together. We hear from the citizens, or we have input from this body, we engage the DPW, and we talk to the other departments within the community, within the village, to assess what are some of the issues? What are some of the issues related to development? What would we like to see a certain area come, look like? In the case of, say, Grashit Avenue, we may say, we want to see an improvement along the corridor. We'd like to see more investment in general business. And then what we can do, not saying we have the answers to all these things, but what we can do then is through that action plan, we can put out a set of goals to say, we will make, we will recommend changes to the zoning ordinance that will do X, Y, and Z. We can look at facades and materials, we can think about some of the problems we've had in the past dealing with people who've approached this body, and maybe give ourselves, in some cases, through the zoning ordinance, a little more review and scrutiny in some of these areas. Some communities in certain districts will, we, uh, we have the ability to, in the general business district, we can, um... We can request certain types of building materials. We had that with Dollar General. And Dollar General was given a palette of materials that had been approved before, and I don't know that everyone was necessarily happy with what those choices were, but as a board, we had to kind of approve what wasn't there. So it gives us an opportunity to take a look at those things and do a deeper dive. As we went through the zoning ordinance, and I think we're going to talk about it a little bit more after this, our initial goal was to do administrative tweaks, to bring it up to date, to streamline the development process and the way that people petition the community for either zoning or site plan changes. I think we're fairly successful in doing that. Well, the master plan process allows us to then go into the individual districts and do a deeper dive and say, is everything working in residential? Does single family two and single family one make sense? Do the lot sizes make sense in terms of the densities? And we can, if we perceive there be an issue in single family. I think some of the biggest issues that were in front of the planning commission the last time, we're looking at, what does Roselle Road end up looking like? There were some plans, I think in the past, to do multifamily on the northern end of that road that's closer to town, as opposed to down by 26, which is more industrial. And I think the consensus that came away of that group is that that is primarily industrial out there, and it was rezoned accordingly. From multifamily, there were some recommendations to rezone some of the properties out there to light industrial. The downtown or the central business district, that was also an area of concern. One of the things that the planning commission did at that time was to provide a density bonus. If you wanted to build in the downtown, we would allow greater residential densities. The reality there is we do have some properties that are challenging to deal with on the south side of the road, because they're tied in with the farm registry. And there's just the basic, just is there a willingness for someone to invest and to make that investment there? Through the master planning process, we can make that as easy as possible for someone to do it, but obviously, we can't, we can't organically make someone come in there and say, okay, we're making a big investment here. But we can make, we can, we can look at that district, especially look at the residential office and stuff that's around it, and say, does this really still make sense? We want this to look like something different, we want to change the nature of what it is we're looking for in there. So I guess with that, I'd open it up to you guys to see what, you know, what you guys want to see out of the process. If there's areas that you feel that are areas of concern, if you could like talk about those, maybe try to put some rank over into those of what, you know... We can't tackle every issue in the community, but I think if we can prioritize issues, we could pick three to four key things that we could focus on in this master plan update. I think there's a lot of things on the master plan, as far as residential, multifamily, where we have our, you know, there's some things I think that were working well that don't necessarily need to be tweaked. So I don't see this as a complete update, there is a complete rewrite of the plan, it's more of an update where we're acting to say, okay, well, this worked. I'll stop talking, I'll open it up to you guys, you know, and try to answer any questions you can about the process or the direction which we're going.
Anyone?
Adam?
Adam, Rachel?
Tracy?
Steve, Mary Ann, Craig?
I do have more questions.
Yes.
Is it appropriate, I know we extend invitation to everybody, right, generals, owners and stuff. Would it be something where, very specifically, the property downtown that we just have, I mean, with, if that person's willing to participate? To see what they'd like to see down there, seen as?
It would be, I think it would be beneficial for the community to try to engage the property. I have never had a discussion within the time I've been here, so I don't know what his intent is, what his backstory is there.
Is that something we could do through this process, or would it be something sort of?
That's something, I feel it would be best to invite him to a meeting, to a workshop, to say, or to, you know, hold a special session about the downtown history of Mary Ann. There's nothing precluding anybody from, you know, reaching out to them and saying, you know, we'd like to get a general opinion of the downtown citizen. But basically, I mean, anything that's going to result ultimately in a recommendation from this board, is this group, will that make a recommendation, once the master plans are put together in this final draft, a recommendation's made to village council. The state's enabling legislation indicates that you have to let it out for 63 days for public review and hold a public hearing. And then at the end of that period of time, you would make a recommendation to village council. Village council ultimately then approves the master plan. And then if there were any zoning changes that are working in concert with those, they're packaged together, that would be the time to create that council's plan. But I guess the reason I state that is that everything, whatever's going with that's, we're bound by the public being excellent, it needs to be a public. So any, the best input we can have is before this board and before the public.
I would, I would venture a guess that if you just ask residents, they would probably want to see a downtown more developed rather than Grashit. That's just my, my guess, and kind of my opinion, because I would like to see it too. But I would think, would you guys agree, or would you think if you asked someone, would you want to see more developed? What area? I have a feeling that they would probably say the downtown. But I know some of that land is not. If we looked at some of that before, some of it's not, but I think the way that it's owned is light industrial or light commercial or...
There is some light industrial, it's kind of a mix on the south side of there. There's some light industrial, there is a general business downtown, but again, with a different vision, some of those things could be changed.
Right, I mean, I would just think that developing a downtown would probably be a... A start, I guess, so, I mean, in my opinion, a focal point, maybe, you know? I don't know what you guys think, but this is my first thought.
Anybody? A while many years ago, I thought it would have been there by now, so I mean, that's just, I assumed, I mean, that direction it was heading in, and it just didn't work out for a number of reasons, so that would be nice.
A lot of the, seems like a lot of the business and a lot of the traffic that we're getting is from Grashit between 26 to 27, right in there. Which is good, but I think there's a lot of traffic that's coming out of downtown, coming on the Grashit. Maybe add some more businesses in the downtown area too, and create a little bit more traffic flow, a little more revenue. Just my thoughts.
I like Grashit myself. I like the concept of the downtown. We have kind of been hanging on the concept of a downtown for a long time.
Yeah.
And I kind of like the idea of Grashit being a little bit more desirable, so that people have a desire to go downtown if they're on Grashit.
True. How many cars, how many cars travel, would you, I have, it's, I don't know what I have.
I don't, I didn't bring a capital lab. It's a huge number, yeah, it's in the, the latest, the numbers that we had in the master plan are in there, I know they've been updated like two years ago.
Okay.
It's... I'm going to guess it's probably within 40,000, 50,000 average day, and that's both directions.
Yeah.
But don't call me, I'm just guessing.
And I think it was during the summer, there was devices all over town again, doing traffic comes 27 and Grashit, New Haven Road and Grashit.
I think they were just at 27 and Grashit.
They were.
Between like the 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock hour, trying to turn out of Decore Park North, left or right on a weekday, it ain't easy.
Well, yeah, remember, that's your, that's your line to get to Richmond. So think about all the people that live in Richmond and then work on the south, I mean, that's the road. You can go around, is it County Line?
You can.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
But there's dirt there. Is it all the way okay? Okay, anybody else? Okay, so motion is in order, right, to get approval from council to move forward with the master plan.
Someone?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, moving forward then, if I'm looking at our schedule, we will, I will work with the clerk this month to get that letter out, to notify everybody. What we're going to do is, what we'll do is we'll tell them that we intend to make the change, and that we will then, through the county, we can post our drafts electronically, so that all distribution of those documents will be done electronically, it's supposed to be, to appear copies for them. With that, we ask that we have a comment on the plan as we go through, as well as the 63 day period. Those comments will all be brought back to you guys for consideration, if there are any, and if requesting change. Sometimes you'll have a neighbor in the community, like Lennox, and they say, well, what you're planning on doing here is either matches well with our master plan, we meet well, or if, you know, if there's an area of conflict, they may point out something to us and say, well, you may want to consider this in this area, because we're planning to do X, Y, or even Y, we're planning to do Z, so that's the reason for those letters. So then at the March 5th meeting, we will come in and we'll have a little presentation for the community land. We'll look at the land use, and we'll also take a look at the transportation components of that, which will be non-motorized, and then also traffic counts, and those elements for all the traffic data that we can get from the community.
Okay, and I'll forward the schedule. Do you guys, do you have a schedule?
I do.
You didn't get that? Craig, did you get that, the schedule?
I did get the schedule.
Okay, I'll forward that to you, and then if you want to take a look, if anybody wants to take a look at our existing master plan, it is available on the village website, under Business and Planning and Economic Development.
And if anybody else, if you're doing things, you know, between meetings, has any questions, or what does this mean, or why do we do this? Or I would feel free to reach out to me, either myself or someone like staff, if that for you guys.
All right, ordinance updates. Jeff, again.
Last month, I gave you guys a memo that kind of summarized every note, all the notes and all the action, I think, that we took looking at the zoning ordinance. We made some general administrative changes or recommendations. Public hearing was held in June. We approved a recommendation to village council to approve, so that's why I think that was approved by village council. So those were the change to the building administrator and just some of the, they were just process-based changes for the most part. We took a look at the heavy, light, industrial office districts, we had kind of, there were four recommended changes to the scheduling district regulations, related to just the minimum lot area, frondage and that. That currently is pending planning commission approval, with a recommendation to go to village council for approval moving forward. So the proposed action I have here is to wrap that up, we would need to schedule a public hearing for both the industrial, and then we also talked about planned unit development. I think we were, I think we were close to, I think we were done with that one, where we think we'd have a good working piece. If we were to schedule a public hearing at either the next meeting or a meeting in the near future for these two changes, then we could vote to recommend them to village council for approval. And we are holding on signs yet, as we're waiting for, waiting for some guidance from here. So really, we have, we have some things out there that do need to be approved. I know that we wanted to hold back and not send everything to village council, lots of notifications, but really, I think we're at a point where these things can all be moved forward, and then we will use them to frame any other changes that we make through the right management master plan process.
I do have a question with the sign ordinance. While, I understand that we want, like, how, no, you can't answer this. Is this long-term weight, short-term weight? Is there something that we can put in place that has nothing to do with the message, but everything to do with the way the message is presented? Like, can we put down the flags and, you know, the types of signs that are permitted without putting anything there in regards to the message?
I think we can, and I think where, I think where we're at right now is, we do have the difference with you right now, but really, we have two sign ordinances on the books.
Right.
We, what was put in front of you guys prior to the whole looking at the Supreme Court, I think we were, we were ready to go with that. I would ask, I would say, I would say, yes, let's move that one forward, and then know that it needs to be repaired, but I would, I would suggest that they look, talk to legal counsel first, how, what's the best way to proceed with that. We know we have issues, but we know we don't have a perfect solution, what's the best thing to do?
Could we just eliminate that portion that relates to the message, is that?
We could, but that, but that, that would be a redefinition of any exemption, signs, temporary signs. Those are the really the big ones, the political signs. You could say that all temporary signs are allowed, and that there are no signs that are exempted. Because we have exemptions where you got address signs, different things, I mean, I think we need a clear read to see how to handle that, because we don't have an answer on that one. What you can leave in and what you can leave out, I mean, if we knew, we'd just, we'd have a writ of ordinance.
Okay.
I'm confused there, because I'm going with what Jen's saying here with structure and what's there.
Correct.
Because the court case has to do with what's...
Because the court case has to do with what's on.
It does, but it, it's not just what's on, that's the thing that's difficult about the court case. It's about how you regulate. And I guess the best example is, is if, in, try to fit it to where our sign ordinance is, if, in the Gilbert Reed case, if I'm a, if I'm a church that holds their, every Saturday, I hold a, I hold a service in varying locations around the town, they were told that they needed to get a temporary sign every time they went to set that up. And their temporary sign that said for a nonprofit is of a certain size and dimension, but someone else can get another temporary sign for a different period of time, and has a larger, it's not the same. It's nothing to do with the message. It ends up being what is restricted and how you constrain the size. If I say my political signs can only be three, three feet by three feet, but then I let the church have a banner that's six feet by 12, I'm giving them preference to their message.
But that still all goes back to structure, if you ask me, not the message.
It does, but it's considered, but, but Robert, with the court is saying, and I'm not an attorney by any means, but the court is saying, it's not necessarily what's, it's not necessarily the language has to be regulated, it's considered the content is being regulated. It's content-regulated speech, because the content's being regulated by the dimension of the sign. So what the court is saying is, don't regulate it at all. I mean, in a nutshell, that's what they're saying, but what we're looking for is, okay, how have people met this in practice moving forward since that? We have not seen any decent, any, anybody who's basically said, this is how to fix it. If we survey the literature, what we find is, we find law firms and state municipal leagues all saying, here's what's wrong, here's what you need to look for, but no one's prescribing a fix yet. So what we're hoping to do, like I said, with the county, and trying to do a model sign ordinance, is not to write a sign ordinance, how to put a sign in industrial court, but just to look at, how do we, how can a community handle these elements that would be compliant with the Supreme Court ruling?
And then all this could take years to come up with. I'd like to see a sign ordinance and then let someone challenge it at this point.
And that's why I would recommend, you have, you have an ordinance that until this would have been compliant. That's why I would say, I would have the village council ask your legal counsel what the best way to proceed is. I wouldn't, I would not give you that recommendation.
So can we all agree to have Tracy take that to council, so we can move on it next month?
Oh, yeah. Make a motion to, does that require a motion? Well, you know what, just to keep it, why don't we bring Chris into the conversation for a moment? What, did you have an opinion that you could share with us about it? Is this?
Say it again.
Did you have an opinion that you could share with us about it or some direction? Has he, have the attorneys already looked at it?
Yes, and they're the one that kind of brought us to a halt.
Okay, so, so we've really kind of already got it.
I mean, where it's been with the attorneys is, I provided them a copy of it, I outlined everything that I said looked like, I said, is this content related? And they basically said, yes, 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 and this, this, and this. But again, they did not prescribe any changes, they just confirmed, throw away.
Though the existing sign ordinance that's in place right now, you obviously have some things that aren't being enforced.
Right.
Though the existing sign ordinance addresses some issues.
No.
No.
Well, to a degree, I mean, it's.
Well, it doesn't eliminate whole signs. It doesn't, yeah, we did.
We eliminated, we eliminated.
In the new one, then we're not doing it.
Oh, no, the new, the new one, the post one does, yes, I'm sorry.
The existing ordinance doesn't.
No. That's why I'm saying, can we move ahead with what we did, and then we'll go back and change it again when somebody thinks of whatever it is, the results of this Supreme Court case, this could be years.
I don't want to put us in a position of liability though, at the same time.
Well, if someone challenges it, they would challenge it to, to the zoning board of appeals, right? That they, I mean, that's where signs used to go before.
That's where, that's where it would go if it's that type of a challenge.
Right, it could ask.
I mean, it would just have a straight legal challenge.
Yeah.
But we'll have an exceptional spot, so we can put the rest of it, I mean, 99%.
We'll talk about it.
What's that, right?
We'll talk about it with the attorney.
Okay.
And I have no problem with it. You know, adopting a new ordinance and, and if it's.
Eliminating those things that we're unsure of and.
Yeah, and moving forward with things that are clear.
Right, that's what I think.
Why couldn't they just make a universal dimension, say it's a, whatever, a five-by-five for all signs, political, religious?
That may, that may be a way of dealing with it, I think that's the type of guides we're looking.
It's the easiest level of playing field for anybody who wants to put up a temporary sign. And we want to make it a lot smaller. Or whatever it is, I mean, you know what I'm saying, 10 feet by 10, whatever, just make a universal dimension. And it's up to them to squeeze in their verbiage on whatever sign they're going to use, but.
But then also, then also anything about age, size. Because, you know, we have different, we have different time restrictions. A political sign has to come down a certain amount of time, and another one can be at a different time. So if you give different preferential treatment to that message by time, that's considered a kind of temporary.
But it's within the, well, you're not going to want to leave your political sign up six months after an election.
Yeah.
Well, you may, you might.
Okay, I do have a question. Is it practical, as far as scheduling this public hearing for the industrial community, is it practical to say that we could have a portion of a sign ordinance by next month and then put this off one month, just so we don't have to put a, put a public hearing out there for two?
Do it all together.
Do it all together, or is that an impractical timeline? This would be two months that we could have a practical sign ordinance, eliminating those problematic things. So instead of scheduling a public hearing for March, we would aim for April and have a partial sign ordinance in place by April, is that practical, or?
My thoughts would be doable, if we're working with the attorney, we'll look to their guidance, if we get through midway through this month and they say no, then we can report back to you guys and let you know, sign won't be ready, but possible.
Okay.
It's doable.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, like, instead of pulling, putting it out there twice and everything, we'll just aim for April, no matter what, for a public hearing, we'll, okay?
Because right now, the, the entire sign ordinance is on hold, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So let's just eliminate those things that have happened in the subject of the Supreme Court, and let's move forward with the new sign ordinance. And once the Supreme Court, you know, once we, there's some resolution through those things that are in question, then we can always add them back in.
Right. Okay, so we'll wait, hold off till next month to set the public hearing for April, and we'll see if this, if it's practical to add a sign ordinance or not. Is that good with you, Jeff?
Jeff, definitely with me, I'd be happy, like I said, we started talking with the attorneys, I'd be happy to continue to engage with them, you know, if we can, if we can, if they feel that we can whittle those areas out and still have, you know, if it works, absolutely.
Okay. Anybody, anything else on that subject? Okay, new business, we already managed, planners report? Any public comments on non-agenda items? Call from the table, anyone? Motion to adjourn at 8:00?
Second.
Second and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.